To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unencouraged, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to spend for a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Welcome everybody here today. Got pretty good crowd this morning. Glad everybody came out. There is no changes to the agenda, correct? If so, we'll ask for a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to second. All in favor? Four of them. Uh, we got minutes to approve on seven, one, twenty twenty-five and eight, four, twenty twenty-five. Trust everybody's read over that. If so, would ask for a motion.
Motion to approve the minute seven, twenty-one, twenty-five, eight, four, twenty-five. And give it, yeah.
Motion to second, any discussion? All in favor? Four of them. We'll open the public comment time. At this time, citizens are encouraged to come, comment on any item requiring the action of the commissioners. The guidelines are posted here behind us. If anyone wants to speak, please come forward. Seeing no movement, we'll close the public comment. Moving on down to presentation of the board. TDA annual report, Mr. Steve Mason.
Good morning. I think you guys have a copy of the, um, annual report. Just wanted to go over with you this morning. One thing before I get started, I do, would like to share with you before I forget it. Uh, we do have, um, terms expiring, um, this year, uh, for our board. Um, that would be one individual, that Shirley Richardson. Uh, she's scheduled to expire, uh, and come off the board on, in November. Um, she is the only one in this rotation. Typically, we've been on a three, two rotation. Um, two going off in one year and, and three going off another, but we got into a little odd, uh, rotation because of a replacement of an individual and then coming into, uh, a cycle. So right now, except for myself and Jay Woodruff to come off in twenty-six, uh, November twenty-sixth, and then John Kilmartin and Bill Nilo to come off in, in twenty twenty-seven. Uh, but Shirley is the only one that's scheduled to come off this year. So that'll be something to put on your future, um, agendas to, to replace that. I did talk to Shirley and Shirley is, uh, willing to come back onto the board. Uh, if there's interest in reinstating her, and I think is a real threat in the environment, and it would be my recommendation to do that because I think she'd be an asset to, to the board. Uh, but that's purely up to, to y'all's decision in that regard. Uh, so switching gears a little bit, going into the report, um, typically, uh, we do have some data in here that will reflect the, the last quarter, uh, but most of this data is, is for the annual basis. And if you'll notice right there, the first figures, uh, there's noticeably considered several increase, uh, with actually tax revenue this year, um, uh, at two hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars that was taken in, uh, in, is, uh, compared to last year of two oh eight, two seventy-one. So it was a, a, quite a bit of difference in, in what we took in. And I think that's been, been indicative of overnight stays and, and what we've seen from a tourism base issue, uh, over this past year, too. It's consistently got a little stronger and we're seeing more, uh, act, uh, activity stays and overnight stays especially. Um, and that was heightened, and you'll see that when we look at the numbers, was heightened at our, at our hotels especially. John recognized that, uh, Kilmartin recognized that as an issue that when we went through the hurricane and some of the issues, there was a lot of overnight stays in there with, with, uh, workers that were working not only in the parkway, but just debris, uh, dispersment and just different things like that. So that is, that is reflected in how much you start looking at the month-to-month, uh, revenue stream. Uh, the other thing that just wanted to, um, uh, touch on from the front overview, what we did help assist, uh, asked the, uh, the Trail Association in, uh, doing some work up at Sam Brown. It was a ten thousand dollar grant that was given to them, uh, in relationship to their, uh, build. And I also understand just here recently from the, uh, the Community Foundation, they also received another twenty-five thousand dollars to help assist additional, uh, trail moving up in there, too. So that was, uh, that was good to hear. Um, also, Wayfinding Science Project, it's, it's out to bid right now and we're just really waiting right now to see where, where we go in that regard and find out where that bid environment's gonna be per sign and what that design, final design. We've shared design with you. I don't think we've changed too or altered too much from the sign, sign, design. But I think what you will find is, um, there have been some little subtle changes and as we get those, we will review those back with you as well. So that you're, you feel comfortable with what we're doing there. In that first wave of signs, I think, uh, we'll probably be able, hopefully, the thought process is to be able to, uh, initiate that program in fall. So we can start getting some signs in the ground. Um, and then, uh, and that's, that is a destination by design project and, uh, we're working very closely with them to do that. Uh, our marketing efforts have gained traction this year, I believe, and continue to. And that's been, uh, very much appreciated by the relationship that we have with the Chamber. Uh, Chamber's done a great job with us, not only from an administrative side, but also just collectively and, uh, coordinated effort to, to work on marketing. And they're, they've been a big asset in the relationship to being able to navigate us through different things that we need to be advertising in this past year. The last thing I would say, um, is we, we have also been able to acquire some technology that can do some geo fencing, that does some fencing around different events and functions or timeframes and slots. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, that we can look at that data, compare that data all the way back to about two thousand sixteen. So if we want to look at any event that's occurred already between two things, two thousand sixteen and, and today, we can look at that data and compare it against what's happened. Where that helps us as greatly is when we start looking at, we're not guesstimating anymore about who's coming, who's going. That, that works off, um, cell phones and information. We can identify where people are from. We can identify where, what's going on, what's happening and why they're here in a lot of respects. Uh, so in, in relationship to what we're doing and how we're being able to use that data, it's helping us greatly when we go through evaluations with our, uh, different awards of grants. Um, if you look at, uh, down at the lower part of that page, um, currently, uh, the, uh, fund balance is at, uh, one hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars. Uh, we're looking at revenues again, uh, for, uh, two hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars, which we reflected above. I would go back up and step up just a minute, though. We have been able to, um, invest two hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars in the community this year uh, over grants and different expenditures and, and capital expenditures for this year. Uh, revenue, uh, for, like I said, it was two hundred and fifty-three thousand. Expenses were just slightly over that of two hundred and fifty-seven thousand, which there was money, um, that we had, uh, in holding. Uh, our long-range plan fund is still sitting at one hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. Um, and this, uh, in April, I think anything that you want to add there number-wise.
Yeah.
And then if you look at, if you look at our, uh, exhibit A, that's just a breakdown of our TDA fund balance, uh, sheet. Uh, we have no obligated expenses out there. It's outstanding, uh, again, one hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars in long-range funding still available. And then that leaves our fund balance at three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. As far as your next, uh, exhibit, that, well, just behind that, you've got, uh, just a breakdown of a quick, uh, review of abbreviated, uh, revenue. And then exhibit B will be a breakdowns expenses. Which leads to that two hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars worth of expenses. And then exhibit C will break down those expenses by the last quarter. And we did, uh, in the last quarter, um, we invested in, uh, several grants, again, the Sam Brown Trail So, uh, Association, uh, doing work up there for ten thousand dollars. Uh, we also support the litter pickup, uh, Keep Allegheny, uh, litter free. Uh, that was twenty-two hundred dollars that we, um, initiated and they, they recognize a nonprofit which was sent to Solid Rock Food Closet. And then, uh, Fiber Fast, uh, was supported, forty-eight hundred dollars. Uh, Apple Pie Festival for eight thousand dollars. Jeep, uh, Save Christmas, uh, from the Jeep, Small Jeep Club, uh, forty-five hundred dollars. Use It On Main, five thousand dollars. And I believe that captures most of those. Fiddler's Convention for nine thousand dollars. Then, and, uh, so the last exhibit is just your breakdown of revenue. That's exhibit D. And you'll notice, um, when you look at December and you look on either side of November and January, they were pretty, uh, not typically that high in revenue. And so it, it peaked through there, but you also can look at, if you look at, uh, in June, it was forty-three thousand dollars. That was a, that was a real big spike for typically where our, uh, numbers are typically running. When you average, one of our averages somewhere in about twenty seventeen, twenty thousand dollars. So. That was a total of revenue of two hundred and fifty-three thousand, eight hundred and seventeen. And that's it for me. So. She has some questions.
I think your technology is amazing to be able to tell how many peoples at these events that were. You can go from year to year and compare if we're, if we're gaining ground or we're losing ground. I think that's some super good knowledge right there.
That gives a little traction then, when relationships could be able to navigate through some of that and just take the guesses or estimations. We don't have to take as much head count, but we have had a few events that had taken the head count. And we have taken, uh, statistical data and, and married those two and when doing, in doing that, most of those numbers were pretty consistent.
Pretty close. Tells you everything's working. Yeah.
Uh, we feel good about the data that we're getting, but we also, um, it will, it will recognize and be able to support what's, what's being said.
All right. Any questions? Anybody?
No.
We appreciate the job you're doing there, Steve. It's good to hear. Moving on down. Mr. Larry Van House, Director, Chamber of Commerce.
Good morning. Thank you all for the chance to come to speak this morning. Um, I've got a letter, um, drafted by myself in, in lieu of the board, uh, directors of the Chamber of Commerce. But before I read it, I, I sent it to Bill and he asked me to come and read it. Uh, Bill Shephard, there's a lot of Bills. But, um, you know, I do want to mention that your all support has really been helpful. Um, Coach Toleen, uh, I spoke with a lot of merchants, both in town and, and, in Western North Carolina. And across the board, most of your, um, retail merchants especially are, are down and sales anywhere from fifteen to thirty percent. Um, and, and in this area, it seems like twenty to twenty-five percent is the matching number. That's difficult. And to be honest, being, none of us would want to take that kind of payback, uh, personally. And, uh, when you say, okay, we're gonna take away twenty, twenty-five percent of your income, now you need to advertise more, you need to promote yourself more so that you get that back up where you used to have it, well, how do they do that? You know, and, and I'm proud to say that the Chamber, because of what the county and the town has done and our membership, has been able to kind of fill the gap there and, and to stand in proxy for our community and our services and our businesses. And, uh, we want to continue to do that. We want to be responsible. We work with the TDA to that effort. And so anyway, uh, I just want to read you this letter of appreciation from the board of directors of the Allegheny Chamber of Commerce. Dear Allegheny County Manager, Bill Shepley, Chairman Bill Osborne, and all of our Allegheny County Commissioners. On behalf of the Allegheny County Chamber of Commerce, I want to express our genuine appreciation for your appropriation funding for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six fiscal, fiscal year. Your support provides essential resources to help us continue promoting Allegheny County, supporting our business community and creating opportunities for growth and connection. A portion of this funding directly supports the operation of the Allegheny County Visitor Center, where we welcome guests and help them discover the numerous small business events and recre, recreational activities that make our county unique. This investment not only benefits our merchants and service providers, but also enhances the overall experience of living in and visiting Allegheny County. In a place like Allegheny County, it's the shared commitment of people like you that keeps our community strong. We are grateful for your trust and look forward to continuing our work side by side and in your head. With the heartfelt thanks of all the Chamber Board and membership, Larry Van House is the Director, Allegheny County Chamber of Commerce. Good night, honey.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate, appreciate the job you do. Next, Tiffany Boyard. David Spicer.
Good morning.
Morning.
We're here today to recognize a couple retirees. The first is Ken Smith. If I can ask Ken to come up to the front. So Ken retired on August the first with thirty and a half years of service to EMS. We would like to present him with this plaque of appreciation for all of his hard work and dedication to Allegheny County. And David has a few things to add.
So, um, Ken and I go way back and, uh, we've worked together for many years. I told Ken, um, at his retirement party, um, I've really learned a lot. You know, it's, it's apparent to me, things always change and Ken's been pretty good at keeping up with it. He's, um, he's really good at, at some things that maybe I have witnesses in, but we've, we've worked together and learned from each other and he's, he's, uh, yeah, he's been like a brother. So, um, I'm proud to know Ken Smith and proud to have been, um, his boss the last couple of years that he has employed with Allegheny County. So certainly, um, we want to recognize Ken and his accomplishments and all the things that he's done for our county and taking care of the citizens. He's, he's been in the ditches. He's been in the mud and blood and all, for the, all these years. And sometimes in the middle of the night and we are, we hours of the morning. So, you know, it's, it's, it's good to know that we've got people like that that we can certainly depend on. So, Ken Smith, thank you. I appreciate it.
Feature what you might.
We sure can. You need gems to look at.
Thank you.
That's good. Very good.
So our next retiree is Bonnie Pruitt. Bonnie, if you'll join us. Bonnie is also retiring from EMS on September the first and she has provided the county with twenty-seven point eight years of service. And we would like to present her with this plaque of appreciation for all of her dedication and hard work.
So Bonnie, like Ken, uh, Bonnie and I go back, I don't even know. But, um, we served on the, uh, committee or on the team for critical instance stress debriefing. You know, we got, we got to know, um, Bonnie and Eugene and I worked with Eugene some, too. Uh, certainly, uh, Bonnie's been an inspiration over the years. She's been like a sister to me and, um, we get joking and cut up and we do good. Um, and Bonnie's been a, a very loyal, uh, employee for Allegheny County. She's one that, that has been very, uh, instrumental in helping us develop some of the things there at Allegheny County EMS. Uh, she takes care of our, uh, memorabilia stuff and, um, she looks after our projects and she looks after our parties and, um, this time though, she's getting to set this one out. So, um, we're planning Bonnie a party. Uh, we'll see how that goes without Bonnie's help. We'll see how that goes. It's, uh, I, I really, I really. Yeah, I hope she comes. But, um, anyway, Bonnie's been, uh, really a good friend and, uh, a close companion and a good coworker and, uh, well, I just love her and Ken. They, they just, they're, they're special to me. Um, but she's served the county very well and diligently and, um, she loves the people. And, uh, that's, that's something special and something you don't always find. So, thank you, Bonnie. Or, yeah. There's eight years on hold. Yeah.
Same city.
Yeah.
Eugene.
Yeah.
Any more than a year?
Yeah. All right. You're finally this one. Three, two, one.
I, I would add, um, with that, these guys that's here, you see them in uniforms and Justin, he's, he looks a little bit different, but Justin is my assistant director, uh, he is just different. But, um, we, we had some more here that when unfortunately they had to run a call, but they're here in support of Ken and Bonnie. Um, the word went out, but all of them wasn't able to be here today, but thankful for those that's, that's able to come. Um, Brandon, Brandon was her supervisor, uh, for Bonnie and, uh, Franklin, who left, was Ken's supervisor. So, um, those, you know, it's, it's hard to do what we do without the support of all these folks. So, um, thank you for everybody. Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Proud to be the director.
That's quite an accomplishment. Those people have served our county well. You really hate to see them go. Too good, right there. Okay, coming up next, we're forward is Grant Wagner. Youth Force.
Hi, how are y'all doing?
Good, good.
My name's Grant Wagner. I'm a sophomore at Allegheny High School and I am a member of Allegheny 4H. I will be representing Allegheny County, North Carolina, Association of County Commissioners at Youth Force Down in Greve, North Carolina. I'm excited to strengthen my leadership skills and learn more about the role of county commissioner. And, you know, see y'all there.
We appreciate you representing Allegheny. We know we're gonna be in good hands.
Thank you.
Uh, the 4H Club is a good organization, good organization. Anybody got any comments?
I just appreciate you taking the time and doing that and putting some effort in that and representing us. So thank you so much for that.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. We appreciate it.
Yes, we, if we can, we need a picture with Grant, with all the commissioners. That's part of his requirement, but we're super proud and going to represent us and you guys this weekend. Yeah, let's do a couple. Everybody, let me see some teeth. Teeth small. Oh, that's good.
Hey, Grant.
Yes, sir.
David Spicer's gonna be there also.
Yeah, I'll be there.
All right.
Good.
Okay, good.
Good.
Timmy just made a good point here. If we didn't load all these pictures, we'd put our neckties on today. Just saying.
Yeah.
Okay, next on the list, Sherrod Dawson, Director of Board of Elections.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Do you mind if I say something?
Go right ahead.
Um, we are really excited. I've been, I told the board that I wanted to have a, uh, a new part of board meetings, the daytime board meetings, in which we invite three of our managers to come and tell you a little bit about what they've accomplished over the past few months and, uh, let, let you see them and ask them any questions. Um, this is a great team in this county. And, you know, the, the people that came before me that hired these people deserve a ton of credit for picking such good, good folks to, to represent this, this county. And you'll see that we're only as good as these managers, you know? I get the honor of, you know, representing them, but they're the ones that are doing all the, the hard work. And so this is the beginning of maybe ten of these that may occur.
Good. Sounds good. Well, right here's trouble, trouble right off the bat, right here.
Good morning and thanks for allowing me to be here this morning to give you all a little update on what we've been into. For, most people think we only work one day a year, two at the most, but I beg to differ. Um, we started out the year behind because we were working on the Griffin protest up until May. We filled multiple, multiple, uh, records requests, um, and lawsuit requests. They, they just came in in the droves and, and, uh, that was how our year started off and didn't end until May of this year, um, with Griffin finally conceding in the, in, uh, his race. Um, during that time, in March, I went to the North Carolina Directors Association, um, Conference and Training, uh, in Durham for, uh, two days. Uh, this is required by law for me to attend and, and when she can. Uh, she's not required, but she needs to keep up her certification. This, uh, all of our trainings are contingent on keeping my certification and her certification up. Um, then in June or the end of July, her and I both went to Wilmington to another conference, uh, for two days. And the best part about that conference was coming home because it was hot, hundred degrees, miserable. Um, but then every other week, we have to be on a virtual training with a stakeboard, um, every other Wednesday. And that gives us updates on laws, changes, ongoing litigation, um, other training or information that we might need to know for, um, upcoming events. Uh, a lot of times they'll give us, uh, updates on protests and challenges and, and just anything that might be upcoming. Um, also, we, in an odd number of year, which is our off year, all we have is municipal. We purge all of our records that have, they're retention, the retention period. And because I'm OCD, we bring them to our office and shred them ourselves. We don't really have enough to, to hire a, a commercial shredder. And like I said, I'm OCD. I like to make sure it's done. Um, twice a year, in January and July, which we've already done this year, we do a, what we call a buy-in list maintenance. And that's removing of any voters that have been inactive and had no contact with us for two general elections. And this is usually big after a presidential election. We had, uh, I can't remember exact amount, but we had several mailings that had to go out for, for this purpose. Um, also, we do. out for for this purpose. Um also, we do weekly removal of voters who are, we used to do this on a monthly basis, it has increased to weekly, um voters that have been inactive, um not inactive, I'm sorry, that have been deceased since our our last purge or serving a felony sentence. We have to take all of those voters out of the regist- registry. We've also been working on a registry repair uh that resulted from the Griffin lawsuits um of any voters that the record doesn't show a driver's license, the last one of their social security or driver's license number. We initially only had seventy-three of those to work on and I was able to go back into the uh previous voter records and if they had that number on it, we were allowed to add that to the to their registration and fix their voter registration. So in doing that, and that was, that came before that it was actually required for that to be on their the registration. Now that it is required, I was able to go in and fix and got our list down to thirty-five. So we only have thirty-five that will have to be, get a mailing from the state board and have to come in and fix their registration. Hopefully they will all fix it because if they don't, they will have to vote provisional in the next election if they don't come in and get that fixed. Um another thing we've been doing is we try to keep any new updates, we try to keep the public informed through our website and our Facebook page and it's great about keeping notices on our Facebook page, sharing them from the state board so they have the the information directly from the state board and not just from anybody. And that's a work of trying to keep misinformation down and and uh um the next thing we did was July the twenty-second, we swore in our new board um that were appointed in June. We do have a new state board uh executive director, Sam Hayes. He took Karen Rinsen-Bale's place, so we're all, we're getting used to all of that. Um I've been working on uh poll worker recruitment. Um our chief judges and judges are appointed tomorrow. Um and after ever presidential, we always have some that's done, so I've been working on poll worker recruitment and have been successful so far. Um another thing that we have to do on a regular basis is I have to go in and I try to do it on a weekly basis when we get a report from the state on how many addresses that are not matched up with a voter. And I have to go in our system and physically map the the voter's house in our system and it may not make sense to a lot of people, but I ha- I get, I have to match it with our GIS here in the county. I match the houses and make sure that voters where they're supposed to be. So that's something that's ongoing that I do regularly. And uh and I just want to give you all an update on the upcoming candidate filing. It's coming early this year. December the first through the eighteenth will be candidate filing for sheriff clerk of court, board of education, three seats, county commissioner, three seats. And then Soil and Water will have two seats open and their filing will be till June because it's nonpartisan. And if, just for a little information, anybody that is considering running for sheriff, they do have under general statute, uh one sixty-three dash oh six, any candidate who is interested in filing for sheriff must obtain a valid felony disclosure statement from the North Carolina Sheriff's Training and Standards Division before they can file for candidate. And um. I just, and just a little update on voter registration. When I began in two thousand and seventeen, Jan- January two thousand and seventeen, our registration was a little over seventy-five-hundred voters, registered voters. We have now increased, before our list maintenance in January, we were at a little over eighty-three-hundred. List maintenance took three hundred and twelve out, so we're down to eight thousand and seventy-three registered voters, which is very good for a county of our size. And if you don't mind, I have um a little flyer here, there's one on our door. Bobby Ragland is doing a um celebration for George Sheets' birthday, which was today. In honor of him, he's giving away free ice cream at Burger King today, ice cream cones, for anybody that would like to go down. George was a huge asset to the Board of Elections, he was a huge asset at Allegheny County and he is greatly missed. Can I answer any questions?
Any questions?
I do have one. Um curiosity, so how does um, so when somebody passes away, do y'all get alert for for through the state or something, like when they do this death certificate?
We do, but most of the time, we already have them taken out because we have two great funeral homes here in the county that go ahead and send us a deceased, notice of deceased voter and send us, they fax it to us, we get them taken out right away. But we do have a list for, from the state that we have to check regularly on on a weekly basis now um for anybody that dies outside of the county. Because if they die, say they're in Baptist Hospital or Forsyth, then we don't get that from a lot of times. But we do the state. They used to be behind three months and now they've got it up to a weekly thing.
Well, it sounds like you don't have a lot of downtime.
No.
This has been very informative. I mean, I think it's good that the county sees that these folks are just not sitting in there at their desk every day doing nothing. So yeah, thank you Sherri, for what y'all do.
Sherri, I have one question. So when somebody moves, how do you know that that individual has moved and they're no longer in the county for voting purposes?
If the, most of the time, if they move within the county or within the state, the other elections office in that county forwards us their new registration and will take them out. Um we have a connection with the state where we get that automatically. If it's out of state, they go inactive for not being here.
So there's no, no other, if they're inactive, that's maybe because they, the state didn't communicate, you know, the other state?
Yeah, or if we hadn't been able to, they was trying to get a new system and North Carolina blocked it to where each state could talk to each other and and find out that kind of information, but our state blocked it and wouldn't let it come in. I think it was called, I want to say Aaron or something to that effect, it was Prebations. But it's where each state could talk to each other and we would be able to take those registrations from other states out. But our our state blocked it because of, I don't know, really. It was, to me, it was, it was crazy because that would have really helped us.
Any other questions?
Just do a good job.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you.
We appreciate the job you do and and speaking about George Sheets, working with him, a great guy, but he he has truly done a lot for the town and the county volunteering and and his bucket trucks and a host of variety of different things, but he's he's a super good guy. He'd be greatly missed.
I think the maintenance department, David, can probably balance that. He'd call him and and borrow the truck and half the time, wouldn't even charge anything.
Yep.
And he served the elections department from two thousand and fifteen until twenty twenty-four.
He's always the guy that stepped forward instead of backing up a step. He's always willing to go forward. He was. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks Sherri.
Next up's Melissa Richter, Transportation Director.
Morning. Thanks for letting me come today and to tell you a little bit about Allegheny Emotion and our accomplishments over the past year. I'll go back to August of last year, I was asked if I would be interested in the director's position. And my first response was no. But after a lot of thinking and supportive talks, I I said I would apply for it. I was nervous and and from time to time, I was still a little nervous. Um it was a little difficult in the beginning because we had all new office staff. We had um the dispatcher was new, the billing clerk was new, and of course I was new. So it was a little bit rocky, but we've we've got everything worked out now. Everybody knows their positions and and what they're required to do. So we're running smoothly now. Um uh just a few of the trainings that I've done is ADA, um I attended boot camp in Raleigh, I've done drug and alcohol management, drug and alcohol reasonable suspicion, uh UGA grant training, and right now I'm currently doing uh Transit Academy. It's like a six-month training, two to three days of of in one week, so. Um and a lot more that I just can't name them all. Uh Melissa Kennedy also has done some training. She's done our past training. Uh she teaches, uh which requires her or she's done the past training to be able to train our drivers, which are required every year. Um and she also did the drug and alcohol reasonable suspicion. Um the budget process was very interesting. This is the first time I've ever had to do that, but that was a lot of, a lot of thinking that goes behind that. The grant process has been learning too. Uh there's a lot of steps and a lot of documents that have to go in to even present it before you can get an approval and then there's a lot of documentation to process those grants. Um we uh we had a compliance review, uh where where the state has a firm come in and they look at everything to make sure we're doing exactly what we're supposed to do. We had no findings, which was very good. Um I attended our annual conference in Cherokee in April. Um that is a very helpful conference. Uh they they have training and you get to connect with a lot of other transit directors and learning from some of those really helps a lot. Um we received along with all the western counties of North Carolina, the Transit Academy or Transit System of the Year Award. We are fully staffed now. Um we get, we're getting very busy. We've been busy and we're up to nineteen or twenty, I think, total in our department. Um so I wanted to give a little shout out to Melissa Kennedy, Debbie Combs, and Shannon Chandler. They are the ones in our office and for all their hard work. Also, our drivers for, we could not do what we do without them. Lubella, Roger, Patrick, Danny, Dan, David, Chuck, Eugene, Terry, Angela, Elsie, Gary, Jerry, Jeff, Reggie, and Frank. Um thank you for making Allegheny Emotion a great asset for the citizens of our county and thank you to the citizens for their continued support. And thank you commissioners for your continued support. Even though some days are harder than others, when you hear someone on the phone say, what a difference Allegheny Emotion has made in their life, how they don't know what they would do without us, it's made uh my heart feel really good and I am proud to be the director now.
We appreciate, we appreciate that. Anybody have any questions or comments?
I just think it's a great service and you run a good organization.
Yes, I would uh, don't we have a a DSS person intertwined into your office too?
Shannon.
Shannon is the one, yeah, so.
I include her with everything we do because she's.
Yeah, so so I think a lot of things, like all these things have to mesh together that they all, different departments work together to make all that stuff work very well, but I appreciate what you've done Melissa.
Thank you.
I got a comment, I don't have a question, but you got through that state audit without any problems, you've done great. But I hear the same thing you just said, people really appreciate and really rely on Allegheny Emotion. I mean, little things, you know, that they can't do, they really appreciate. And I think that's one of the better services this county stands behind. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Thanks Melissa.
All right, next up, Mr. Eric Hamilton, Allegheny Soil and Water Director.
Morning. Morning. Just kind of throw it off way short. I was in Cherokee last week at a conference, so this is going to be short. Um as far as accomplishments, um this year, we did have, I'm starting with the education side. Um we did have a state winner for the eighth grade, not grade slideshow, for this education. We did have a state winner in the slideshow contest. Uh we did have a young lady, she went to the state speech contest and as far as I know, she placed finish, placed fifth in the state. Uh we also, we had our state marathon back at the end of April, beginning of March, or end of March, beginning of April, we had our area marathon. Um that was the end of March, first of April. And we also had fourth grade safety day, that was back in April. We had all county four graders came with nine different educational stations for them. Um first of May, we had a farmer's night out, had a little over a hundred plus people attended that event. We did, we partnered with the county fireworks for that, had food truck. That was all done with donated money, no tax dollars were used for that. Um we also had, also hired a new education admin assistant, um Chelsea, previous assistant, she left, she's taking out the high school, teaching ag. And then cost share, as far as our technical stuff, we completed a little over five contracts with different farmers for a total of a little more than seventy-five thousand dollars. Doesn't sound like a whole lot, but that money goes a long ways when it's with farmers putting in water, tanks, water troughs, ag roads, whatever it be. Um as far as my department, I don't know how much y'all know about us as a department. Soil and Water, we are a kind of subdivision of the state, but we're a county department. We also partner with NRCS as far as federal stuff. Just so everybody knows, out off of two-twenty-one, close to ninety-three intersection, we're getting ready to start a stream restoration project, like a million dollar project, it's going to be finished. Um they're getting ready to start that, that's if you see trucks quitting, moving around out now, that's what they're doing. Uh as far as with the state, we do different disaster relief. I've been working on EWP, different disaster programs, getting ready to have them, we'll be up probably this week or next week, looking at some sites here in the county, along with some other federal officials. I just got a voicemail from somebody in Washington, a nonprofit's going to be here, meet with me sometime today, later on today. About setting up another different group, but if you get off the message. Those are just a few things that we do for the county. Um sorry, short notice, I'm pulling this one kind of out of the back. Any questions for any of us?
Questions, comments?
Yeah, I do have a question. On the stream restoration, what uh, I know there's, there used to be quite a bit of that going on in the past, so how does anyone go about starting something like that?
As far as soil and water, I don't get enough money yearly. I get enough money to probably do a couple hundred for the stream restoration. So we don't focus on that, we focus more on water quality and erosion. The stream restoration, a lot of times comes from the federal side.
Okay.
The federal side will do an equip project and then we, Soil and Water, we partner with them and we go after a, go after funds from the state, Division of Water Resources. They have a funding pool that we go after as maximum funds for the equip money. So if I've got four hundred and some thousand dollars in equip going for a project, I'd go to them, speak to them, write a letter, fill out the application. It's usually not but done by us, it's usually done third party, we're the ones that signs off on it. And we get approved for that, complete the project. Federal side only uses pays for the water tanks, water line, heavy heat series, things like that. Where a lot of the state funds will help with the actual end stream structures and doing the restoration part. Similar to what um was done out here, federal side, that was DWR money too.
Yeah, that's all, thank you, thanks.
That's what it comes down to. We've got two big projects coming up here in Allegheny this year, this fall.
Thanks.
Any other questions, comments? We appreciate the job you guys do. You can write down any road that has a creek on it and see a lot of problems this day and time resulting from all these. Don't it take billions of dollars to fix, repair some of these, all these creeks? Don't it take billions of dollars to fix, repair some of these, all these creeks?
If they're done right, they'll hold up. You've been out of veterans park since Celine. I think we had less than a hundred foot we had to repair. They weren't just a matter of getting the funds, getting people up, going in on.
All right, hang tight, you're up next again. Moving on down to general business, Mr. Eric Hamilton.
All right.
Once again.
Where you going to start at?
At the beginning.
Going back to the EWP and disaster response stuff. The state has allocated some funds to different districts for extra individual to help with. I know Allegheny's not near as bad as some of the other districts. We do have a couple of sites that we looked at. So I've spoken with Andrew with New River Soil and Water of Burn Ash. They've got some sites, not enough to really justify a full-time person every time, all the time there, neither do I. So we agreed to see if I split it. Their board's fine with it, my Soil and Water board seems to be fine with it. Hope you all are fine with it, because it's, they're versing it at no cost. Right now, I'm waiting on a master agreement to come from David down in Raleigh. As soon as we get the master agreement, I'll be able to bring it for y'all. There's nothing going to be anything for y'all to decide. Everything will go through Ash County. We're just going to get the person fifty percent of the time. So it's going to, it's going to be a win-win all the way around. You don't have the paperwork, you don't have to handle the money, you don't have to do anything.
Is that a permanent position or a part?
Three years.
Three years, okay.
As Allegheny, we're allocated, I think it's right at two hundred thousand dollars for a three-year position for benefits, salary, everything. Salary's not been spoke of yet, paying yet, or what benefits, that's all we've done.
We'll bring it forward to the board in two weeks, move on.
As soon as I get the paperwork, I'll give you the report.
Okay, sounds good.
And on the other part, possible projects at the fairgrounds. I've met with Blue Ridge RC and D Resource Conservation and Development, Dr. Hartson. I've met with the Brick Blue Ridge Environmental Consultants, which is now a part of Stratus, the Stratus team. They are a engineering group by Wilkes-Barre. They do stream restoration designs, all kinds of different designs as far as runoff for streets, anything like that. We've been looking at maybe doing a couple of projects out of the fairgrounds. One of them being, as long as we get to matching all the funds. One of them would be like a maneuver pit, kind of like I know Bobby's mentioned it before. This place to store the maneuver and the shavings and stuff to take out of the barn, hop to the side of it. Be a concrete pad with a curb, maybe a back wall, a hit wall to push against. And that, runoff lap, you come down, go down before you get to Blitzo Creek. It would go into a big wetland area, storms, like storm wash system. So that filters through before it goes into the creek. And then we're also looking to build one just down from that, right above the bridge going into the fairgrounds. Looking about to build another little storm wash thing there to catch all the runoff, cover up the black building, the park, all that stuff. To clean the water before it hits Blitzo Creek. There's something to ring before you all, we're still looking at funding. Nothing's set yet. We can get the funding, those are two of the projects we'd like to do. Of course, not until we get closer to that point. I will be back to speak with you, obviously. Any questions?
How big an area is that? Consists of next to the bridge?
It'd be a pretty good sizable area. Been there to the fairgrounds much, to the low strip, to the west side of the bridge on the creek. There's a low spot where all the water runs from the black building, the park, lot, everything that goes down that one spot goes down. It's a little low spot before it enters the creek. So that's roughly where it'd be, I'm going to say something about twenty-five, twenty-five something.
Okay.
Something, love to do that, I bet you.
Yeah, give us something to think about.
Any other questions?
We appreciate it. Thanks, Eric.
Don't forget your water.
Okay, next, it's April Hand, CFO of the Finance Office.
Good morning. I passed out a summary of the finance report. This is actually, again, for last fiscal year, because we're in that, that end of the year adjustments for revenues and expenditures. So I wanted to provide some more information about last year, and I added a couple of things to it for the board. Year-to-date revenue, twenty-one million, nine hundred and sixty thousand, four hundred and twenty-seven dollars and thirty cents. Year-to-date expenditures, twenty-one million, five hundred and sixty-two thousand, two hundred and four, four dollars and twenty cents. And then right under the highlighted section, that is your amended general fund budget in the highlighted section. And the original budget was twenty-one million, four hundred and seven thousand, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars. But as you can see, the amended budget for last year was twenty-four million, four hundred and eighty, four hundred and eighty thousand, six hundred and nine dollars. So I just wanted to give the board a snapshot of that, because last year we amended the budget three million dollars. Now, a million and a half of that was to the school system for the new high school project. So I just wanted to give the board a snapshot of that. Bank balance as of this morning, eight million, seven hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars, eight hundred and seventy-two dollars and twenty-nine cents in the checking. Twelve million, four hundred and forty-three thousand, seven hundred and sixteen dollars and thirty-three cents in the savings, for a total of twenty-one million, two hundred and eighteen thousand, five hundred and eighty-eight dollars and sixty-two cents. And then in the separate Town of Grant Sparta savings account that we're handling, fourteen million, four hundred and twenty-three thousand, six hundred and thirty-two dollars and fifty-one cents. So our estimated financials as of right now, because we, we still are receiving some revenue and we still are adjusting the expenditures for last fiscal year, is three hundred and ninety-eight thousand, two hundred and twenty-three dollars and ten cents. And then I did include the audited general fund budget and the things that, that I presented at the last meeting. So any questions just on the basic financials for the county?
Yeah, I do have one question.
Okay.
So, and this may be a Sparta question. Are they starting to use any of this money? Or they started this project yet?
They have started the project. We've actually reimbursed, I believe, three or four quarters now. So it's a quarterly reimbursement. They are providing the reports and the, all the financials and the invoices to back everything up. They also provide the quarterly report. We review everything, make sure it balances, send it to the state, and then we write them a check to reimburse them for what's been spent.
Yeah, that's all I got.
And then down at the bottom, I have, I do just have the figures this morning, because we're still adjusting those also. The local option sales tax for fiscal year twenty-five, one million, four hundred and forty-four thousand, nine hundred and four dollars and thirty-seven cents. And then the additional quarter cents, four hundred and two thousand, seven hundred and fifty-three dollars and sixteen cents for last fiscal year. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Next, David Spicer, Senior Project Operations Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Ford, for an opportunity to come to you this morning. A few things that I have administration building. We have completed the office repairs and renovation for our human resource officer. So she's been able to move upstairs, so that's, she's back where the Veterans Administration office was prior to moving them to the front. Courthouse, we do have our certificate of occupancy. So we've had our final inspection and all was well. So we're good with that. That, that is something that we've been looking for, for quite some time now. There is a couple of windows that, that have to be replaced. Of course, this week is Superior Court, so not a good time to be beaten and banging in the, in the jury room. So we're, we're having to wait for a day or two until we can get that completed. Transfer facility, we had one load of commingle at three point eight oh tons, no cardboard. There's one almost ready to go, but it's not gone yet. We've had four loads of scrap metal, fourteen point four five tons, which yielded the county two thousand, five hundred, eighty-eight dollars and eighty cents. We're still working with TRC and TRC is continuing their ongoing project there for us. And they are working on getting everything ready and prepared so that we can send that project out for bid sometime right after the first of the year, January or February, is the, the timeframe that we're looking at sending that out for bid. We do have the new ambulance that did come in. So that ambulance has actually had to be put on the road this weekend, as we've had some unfortunate things happen to some of our other ambulances. But we're having those repaired and all those things is well, and it's doing just fine. Animal control, we had one citizen sheriff's department, nine well checks, six dogs and/or cats picked up, four ran at large, five bites and quarantined, nine that were trapped cats and/or dogs, which yielded a hundred and four hours, twenty-seven calls, and one thousand fifteen miles traveled. So I have those, all that information. If there is any questions, I'll entertain those at this time.
I was standing with the Gallagher County Board and State. We good on that?
Yeah, we just had, we just had another inspection a couple of weeks ago. And there was only some minor things that they wanted, but we did pass our inspection then. So it's all well.
Good deal.
All good.
Any other questions? Moving on down, general business for action, Blue Ridge Energy Loan, April Hand.
So we have been talking with Blue Ridge Energy for probably the past month, six weeks, something like that, gathering information. And the board was presenting some general information about this loan process at the last meeting. So one of the things that we need to move forward is a vote from the board to proceed with any type of application with Blue Ridge Energy. I will tell you that David and I had a Zoom meeting with LGC. And we will have to go through another LGC process along with this Blue Ridge Energy process, if the board agrees with that, just because of the amount of the loan and the timeframe for the repayment of the loan.
Okay.
Can I answer any questions?
Any questions, anybody, about the loan?
So we need a motion?
Need a motion on the second.
Motion that we move forward.
Second.
Motion and second, any further discussion? This is the interest-free, being the all on right.
This is the interest-free, it, it would be up to one point three million.
Okay.
If, if approved, yes.
We need that in that motion also.
Yes, let, let's do all the details if everybody doesn't mind.
Yeah, yeah. For the loan to be up to one point three. Let's put that in the motion and then Timmy second, Dan I second.
He did.
Okay. Okay, any further discussion? We got a motion second on the matter, all in favor? Five oh. Thank you.
Thank you.
This, this dispersment of fire tax, Heather, Heather Klein.
So if we look at last year's contract, there was a requirement for the audit. You had to be prepared to present your documentation for the audit. Of course, last year was the first year that we had that for the audit requirement. And then, of course, this year we have quarterly requirements that are in the contract. One of those obviously being the audit, but then a bunch of other things that now we require. So I think last time we voted on the, was it the appropriation?
It was the budget amendment for last fiscal year, yes.
So we voted on the budget amendment to approve it, but now I think there was a question about the audit that is taking place currently with one of our fire departments and whether or not we should release those funds. It was for last year, but there was the requirement for the audit compliance. And we're in that audit now, and the money is being paid in this fiscal year. So I would say that for the board, you can withhold that money until there's been compliance with that audit, because it was required last year in the contract. So it's just a continuation this year with additional requirements.
Good. Everybody understand?
Yes, I just had one question. So when we made that motion last meeting, that allowed you to go ahead and do the amendment. But in the way it was made was, I don't know if we were approving all the rest of them to be paid, all of the fire departments, and maybe just leaving out the one until they meet those requirements, or how did we go about that?
The only thing the board approved at the last meeting was just to go ahead and amend the budget and have those funds available to pay out.
So you're not paying any of the other fire departments?
Nothing has been done since then, that is correct.
That needs to be done, we need to.
The other fire departments are not getting paid.
Well, we, we haven't done anything other than the amendment.
Well, they need to be paid, the other departments, I think.
And we can do that next week, yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
One of the questions was, did we want all five to get that money? Or did you want to have it be just the four that have complied? And a question I had asked Heather was, is there anything in the, in the contract?
Bring, bring your microphone down.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did you hear any?
Yeah.
Any, what is it? Okay. What I had asked her before was, is there anything in the old contract that shows that they're, they've not complied with that contract?
Which is the audit.
That would lead to saying, we're not going to give you that money for the, and you're saying?
The audit.
That there is?
Yes, it's the audit.
Okay.
So we need a little, we probably need some clarity here. We're dealing with two years.
Right.
July one.
Right.
Backing up.
Right.
Is the year we're talking about twenty-five.
Exactly, but there was still the requirement for the audit, that you had to be in compliance and provide all the documentation for the audit. So that was in the prior contract. It, it's in the new contract too, but with extra qualifiers in the new contract. So if you're not in compliance, even from last year with the audit, so we're carrying that forward and you're not in compliance this year with the audit, which is why I said I, I feel comfortable saying that you withhold on those requirements of the audit.
Good. Everybody understand? We'd need a motion to make that effective, to keep withholding.
Audit.
The audit motion, till the audit, till the audit is paid, get by the audit.
Yeah.
But we need to make sure.
Make the other four.
Yeah, we need to make sure we, in the motion that we release monies for the other four.
I make the motion that we approve dispersment for the fire departments that are in compliance.
I'll second that motion.
Got a motion and a second to basically pay the ones that's in compliance. That should be four, four departments. Any further discussion?
I got one.
Good.
I know April keeps up with our, what's the last information you got from?
The last communication I had with our auditors, they are, they are going to finish up the report, because they feel they've got, gotten everything that they're going to from the fire department.
They didn't get what, twenty percent of the receipts?
I don't know the exact percentage. The last time that, that Scott and I spoke, he said they had a third.
A third?
Yeah.
When was that?
Probably a couple of weeks ago. Yeah. But he's going to go, he's moving forward with the report. They have everything that they're going to get. It's been seven months, so they're moving forward with the report. And the board should have that, I would think, in the next month.
Good. Good. We still, we should have our motion and our second on the floor, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, all in favor, raise your hand. Five oh.
Thank you.
Okay. So conclude, Rita Miller Tax Administrator. She's going to bring us good news.
Good morning.
Morning.
So what I have for you today, the first one is the consent agenda, which is the refunds for leases from the month of July. If I know any questions you might have.
Any questions?
I make a motion to approve the August eighteenth, twenty twenty-five consent agenda. Second.
Got a motion, second, any further discussion? Not all, favor, raise your hand. Five oh.
Two other items this month. First one is a request for a release of the residential solace fee. Mr. Rick Cawfrin, he has three dwellings under construction up in the Honey Creek, New River area. I've included. I've included um his letter requesting the release, and I'm reading that for you for your decision. Uh, I will add the solid waste fee, we put that on the parcel when construction begins on a house. Mr. Cawfrin talks about um the CO, so I did speak with Tony in building inspections, and um there isn't a report that the tax office can get for the certificate of occupancy. So I think the practice that we have of putting the solid waste fee on there when construction begins is the best way we have of tracking that and making sure that they're getting the solid waste fee.
Good. So we need a motion to release that?
I need a, yes, a motion for Mr. Cawfrin's release of the three solid waste fees, one solid waste fee, two, whatever the board chooses to, to do there.
So I, I gotta.
Go ahead, I'm sorry. Go ahead, go ahead.
You go ahead, Bill.
How many houses does it have? I'm a little mixed up here.
There's three that are under construction.
Three under construction.
Parcels, so he's been charged three solid waste fees.
And he's asking to release?
He's asking to release the three solid waste fees because the house is not, the houses aren't finished, and he says they won't be finished this year because they're doing a lot of the work themselves.
So what do you do if somebody else out here building one? Do we release theirs? Do they get it finished?
That's up to the board, we have not done that in the past.
So what do you recommend? Leave it like it is?
She just spoke, we hadn't done it in the past, right?
Yeah.
So would that standard procedure, start the building when they, when they pull their permits and start?
First time the appraiser is out on the property is when the solid waste fee gets added.
Well, if that's, if that's the rule, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I, that's what Bill was asking, sort of like what I was curious about, why does he want it released? Because, I mean, I, in construction sites, you can have, you can have garbage debris. I mean, I know construction is a little different, but you can load up bags of food, trash and stuff, and start dropping it off at the landfill, so I, I, to me, we just need to hold, hold it like it's always been and, and charge it as, as you, as we are supposed to.
That's been the procedure, that's my thoughts, Bobby.
Yep. I, and you know, I just really look to what Rita says for, is there any law backing up what we're doing? Or is that just a county uh function?
Solid waste fee is totally up to the board.
Well, you know, you're building a house and you're paying ninety-eight dollars, but you're not living there?
No, that, the house isn't completed yet, they aren't, they aren't completed.
It's not a little board, that works, right?
Put the ninety-eight dollars on there when the construction begins. That's the best way we have of, of tracking and making sure we get that solid waste fee on there.
And they could be taking bags of trash, and because they are, I, I think we need to leave it like it is.
I'm in favor of that, Seth, leave it like it is. That's been policy to start charging when they basically start building, so that's the way it's been for everybody else. Okay, we need a motion for that.
Make a motion, leave it the way it is.
Got a motion, leave it like it is, till I hear a second. Motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Five of them.
I don't want it.
Okay.
The second one is a request for approval of a late application for property exemption for Allegheny Pregnancy Care Clinic. Um, I have the information from Miss Rhonda Patrick in your packet. This application is one that would have been approved had it been timely received. I also have included your definition of good cause that the board adopted back in twenty-twenty-two. I went back and done some research, and um thus far, the board has approved these exemptions for late application.
Spar the board? Is that what you said? What'd you say, I didn't read?
The board has approved application for your, the request for later.
Good.
I make a motion that we approve this, that, that um, that we approve her request.
Got a motion to approve the request, will hear a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Five of them.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Okay, next item is resolution, the Allegheny County recognizing and approving of the Allegheny County official American two fifty, who's, who's got that? North Carolina Committee.
If, if you don't mind it.
Yeah.
Ask Larry to fill you in.
Thanks, Bill.
Okay.
I believe Larry's called off, you are.
Resolution last last.
Last week, yeah.
Nothing really changed, we have started adding to the committee uh as it's born. Again, I think most of the uh Alleghenies events are happening on the board next year, or sometimes they're spread out based on weekdays. So I think we're gonna be in a good position to recognize the, the birth of, the birthday of the country. If any of you all want to be on the committee or, or want to nominate somebody for the committee, that's great. Just let me and Bill know. Lisa's been voluntold, I'm not sure. She's gonna be a part of it as well, we're looking forward to it.
That's a neat term. Good. Question.
Okay.
So what will be in on the committee consist of, or we don't know yet?
I would call it, the best way I would call it would be a steering committee, just to, to focus our efforts to not just include the county, which we, we, you know, just like in the county, we're self-involved, to, to make it more statewide and, and national level, any activities that we do here.
So far as time-wise, what do you see, meeting once a month?
That's what they had told me, yeah.
Once a month?
And that doesn't have to be a person, it could be Zoom meetings.
It could be them.
Daytime, right, though?
I'm sorry?
Daytime or not, though?
That hasn't been.
Haven't been, great.
It would probably be, like we do a lot of the other meetings, on availability.
Good.
I, I tentatively will, will consider that if, to be a part of that, if, I'm not sure how many is. But, but yeah, I, I would be interested in that.
Good. So we need a motion here.
Make a motion to adopt the resolution as presented.
Second.
Motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor? Five of them.
Thanks, thanks, sir.
Line item transfer, April Hand.
So we just have a couple more end-of-year cleanups, one of them is for EMS, and this is basically for turnover that's happened with EMS and with the overtime budget, retirement, um, a little bit of extra in hospital insurance, and all the money is available, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
So hear a motion to accept.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor? Five of them. Go right ahead, April.
Okay, uh, the next one is just some odd and in things, and most of these occur because folks either didn't take into account the Toshiba copier expense, or had something on their P cards or their county credit cards.
Okay, I hear a motion to accept.
I make a motion to, to approve the line item transfer U five twenty-five.
Your second, got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor? Five of them. Budget amendment number three, April again.
Okay, now we have a budget amendment for a veteran service grant that the county has received. Um, I know part of this grant has been expensed, but we're gonna work with our state representative to see what we can do with the additional part of this grant.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve.
Got a motion, hear a second?
Second.
Motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor? Five of them. Budget amendment number four.
And the last one I have is actually for DSS, thirty-five hundred dollars that they have received to assist with some rental expenses for Helene Recovery for a family.
Okay. Hear a motion to accept? Got a motion and a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Five of them.
Thank you.
Thank you, wraps up that portion. County manager's comments, Mr. Bill Sheffield.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I just have a, a few things, one is, I'd like to introduce you to Sam Evans, who is our fellow for this year. Uh, he started on August the first, he, he just got uh, uh, finished his bachelor's degree in political science, and we have, we've had him involved in many things, can, can you tell them some of the things that you've been involved in so far?
Oh, gosh, I've been in uh Allegheny in motion, the finance department. I helped out with the sheriff's, like the back-to-school thing. I've been doing some research on transfer station stuff. There are all four things.
Veterans Administration, you've been helping us with our, our interactions with Surry County to try to help us through the uh, this period of time. And he's been, he's been great, we're just, we're sort of getting him, we promised him that he would get exposed to all the different departments, and then he would drill down on two or three projects in particular after he does this sort of oversight over the whole, the whole uh organization. So we're glad to have him, he's, he's been a, he's a really good research asset for us, which is helping us a lot.
Could be.
The other thing I wanted to give you just a little bit more information on the transfer station uh facility. So the money that, that we will need in order to be able to try to, to get the, the transfer facility to what it needs to be, to the level it needs, there's several uh sources that we're, we'll be seeking out. One is the, the interest-free loan. We will definitely have to take some money from the fund balance, and uh we need to be utilizing our grants person to seek out grants for us. And Bill and I had an opportunity to talk a little bit before the meeting about whether that, we might need to have a work session to talk about all the work that's gonna be done in order to get it, to where we need to get it, and to talk, to give you more of a, a picture of what we want to do uh from a funding standpoint. I've asked uh April to put together uh a plan on our funding options to present to you at the next board meeting. So it's, it's a major project, it's something that has to be done. Um, and we can do it, we just need to make sure we do it in the most uh financially, long-term, financially viable way. And uh we could, we could either do that in the board meeting and present all that information in the board meeting, or if you all wanted a work session, we could, whatever way works best for the board.
I would favor a work session, what's everybody's thoughts?
I don't know why we can't do it in a regular board meeting. Doesn't.
We were gonna get into the, the dollar bag here, right?
No, no, at that time, yes.
Yeah, you know, and it's from what, what they're got right now, it's outrageous uh to me for what we're getting. Anyway, either way, either way, we need to do it. We can uh, we can talk about the, we can talk about that over email, make a decision.
Okay.
Work it out.
Um, and then another thing is, we, we are beginning to dive deeper into recommendation that several of the board members had made about the auditorium in the elementary school, and the air conditioning and heating there, and getting that fixed so that that could be a, a place where events occur and be an economic development tool for this county, and it's not extremely expensive, it doesn't look like in order to try to do something to get it up to just enough, and, you know, we're talking several hundred people that could attend in there, and it's, it's a, it's just an opportunity that we should capitalize on, I think.
The auditorium, the school or the county?
The school, right?
School, yeah.
Yeah, and the school's interested in this, obviously, too, um, but that, that's going on, that's another piece. Another thing I wanted to uh, to let you know is that I'd really like to, when people hit like ten, fifteen, twenty, twenty-five year mark, I'd like to have them come into the board meeting and, and be recognized, um, sort of like somewhat what we did today with the retirement, if that's okay with the, with the board. That's it, that's what I've got.
Okay. Well, I think it's a good thing to bring them in on their ten, fifteen, whatever we decide on, and everybody needs a pat on the back once in a while, you know?
Absolutely.
Compliment them on their job. Moving on down, county commissioner comments.
Garrison, I guess we start with you.
I don't have a whole lot uh today. Um, just like to reiterate a sincere thank you uh to Ken and Bonnie uh from EMS who have dedicated their uh lives to service of the people of this county, so we really appreciate all the, all the work they've put in over the years responding to calls. Um, and also uh remembering uh George Sheets uh today, as uh today was his birthday. A few, a few months back, we had uh made a couple of, uh, had a couple of conversations about making some uh resolutions to honor uh some folks' legacies who've made a major impact on the county, and Mr. Sheets uh was one of those, so maybe that's something we can get done uh this fall, uh, move forward with some of those processes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Garrison, Bobby?
And I just comment on the demolition derby the other night. I mean, when I went through town, we were backed all the way up to Parker's, the line of traffic trying to get in or get around the entrance, but I think they had a great, great turnout. And uh it was good, a lot of fun for everybody, and I think the county made some good money, people staying at the hotel, shopping, it was good overall for everybody.
Good.
Thank you.
TDA numbers reflect a lot of this, if, if you keep up with the tax. Great, great.
I just want to thank Ken and Bonnie for all the years of service. They've been a part of ambulance service, they will truly be missed, and I think we've got another or two getting ready to retire.
Yeah.
Be missed too, so they've been good employees. So I got.
Timmy, thank you, Greg, Timmy?
Um, yeah, just um, I mean, to back up everything everybody else said here, but I agree with putting out things for the different things, and also the, the retirees, and also the Melissa and Eric and Sherry that came in today and shared like a lot of things that a lot of people don't really understand that they do, and I appreciate them doing their uh coming and be willing to do that for us. Also, I wanted to mention um, and, and I know this, I, because I'm part of that, the board of, uh, board of directors of the DSS up there, and I realize that every time I have a meeting that, you know, we're, we're sort of sheltered from a lot of that stuff that we don't, we don't hear about every day, and I just want to say um, think, think to all the ladies, and they are all ladies, there are no guys up there that are not brave enough, I don't think. But thanks for what all they do every day, and every, and I'm talking about seven days a week, it's just like our dispatch office, you know, they, they do all those things every day, and a lot of times it's, it's not, we don't realize it unless we're involved with, in some of that stuff, but I want to thank those folks also, and same thing to our dispatch, because we do have those in EMS that's, I say a lot of times, when, when we're going about our lives, doing our things on the weekends, spending time with the family, we have a lot of folks uh that's working twenty-four seven.
Yep.
To make sure that we're all um taken care of, so thanks for, thanks for all of that, the hard work of all of them.
Thank you, Timmy, I just reiterate what everybody else has said, that Ken and Bonnie, they truly be missed, two, two genuinely great people, you know? And George Sheets, enough can't be said about him, he's uh, he's done a lot for the town, I mean, used his bucket truck time after time after time, and like I said, he is always the guy that stepped up to the plate, he didn't step back, and he could truly be missed. Then the, the derby, I think Larry and, they had some numbers from the TDA's ability to count those at like thirty-three hundred, maybe thirty-three hundred plus, you know, that's a positive number, and it was big out there, that concession stand, they didn't have enough of them going either.
Really?
Because people were lined up, trying to, trying to get in, but it was a real good event, real good event, had beautiful weather. Anybody else got anything to say? Leo, come on, step up.
I make a motion to.
Make a motion, adjourn, gun motion, second, all in favor, thank everybody.
Thank y'all.
She can have visitors down there, right? She can have visitors.
Yeah.